Good evening, everybody.
I'll take Bethany guest.
I call the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 to order. Would everybody please rise for our flag salute and our prayer? Tonight's prayer will be led by my friend Dustin Steerman and Vice Mayor Knapp has the[28.05][28.05]introduction of our honored guest for leading our flag salute.
Mr. Knapp.
All right. Mr. Grant Keaton was born in Bethany, graduated from both Bethany High School and from Bethany Nazarene College, where he met his wife Evelyn, and they were married in September of 1947. Grant and Evelyn have two children, four grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. Mr. Keaton went to work delivering mail for the U.S. Postal Service and became the Bethany Postmaster in 1962, serving until his retirement in 1982. Between high school and college, Mr. Keaton enlisted in the U.S. Navy on D-Day, June 6th, 1944. He served as a radio man on a troop ship for 17 months during World War II in the South Pacific, notably Japan, China, and the Philippines, and participated in five invasions. Mr. Keaton, would you lead us in the prayer, in the flag salute tonight?
Let's place the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dustin.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father, we are grateful to be here. We exist for you, and we exist because of you. We love this city. Everybody here tonight is here because they want to see Bethany thrive. And when I think about this awesome city and its awesome heritage, it was founded on two things: faith and family. You've been with this city every step of the way, from the founding fathers and mothers all the way to the current leadership. We ask for wisdom. We ask for guidance. All of the decisions that are made here tonight, I pray, would be made with humility and just a desire to serve, serve our fellow men. We thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight, and we love you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. I have a special presentation I want to make. Mr. Keaton, thank you for your service, for leading the flag salute for us tonight. But that was, we're honored by that, but that was our way of getting you and Mrs. Keaton here tonight. And so, because I have a proclamation, would you guys stand, please? Whereas Grant Keaton graduated from Bethany Public Schools in 1944 and joined the Navy during World War II, serving on his ship for 17 months, and whereas, following graduation from high school in 1995, Evelyn came to Bethany Pinale College as a music major, and whereas in 1946, after the war was over, Grant returned to Bethany to work and attend Bethany Pinale College, where he met his future bride; and whereas Grant and Evelyn were married in Pueblo, Colorado, on August 24th, 1947; and whereas Grant began his career with the Bethany Post Office in 1947, and in 1961 was named Postmaster. He retired in 1982 after 35 years of service; and whereas Evelyn began teaching piano while still in college and continued teaching for 54 years. In the early 1970s, she returned to college and graduated in 1974, along with her daughter. And whereas Grant and Evelyn have been blessed with two children, four grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren, therefore, I, Mayor KP Westmoreland, hereby declare September 5th, 2017, as Grant and Evelyn Keaton Day in the City of Bethany, in honor of their 70th wedding anniversary on August 24th, 2017. Seventy years is amazing.
Wow. That's something. Talked about sneaky. You guys know how to do it.
Seventy years, that's amazing.
Well, thank you, KP.
Item 1 tonight is the consent docket A through G. Do I have a motion or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I got a couple of questions on the consent docket. I would like to know, to the extent Russell and Williams has been retained by the City of Bethany, are we on our first year of employment with them, or is this our, where are we in that process?
I believe this is our third year, correct? This is our third year. We're looking to have a four-year term, and then we'll go out. The plan currently is then we'll go out and look, redo it again.
Very good. And then I also had some questions related to the deputy city attorney, and I want to clarify. I saw the letter from April, and I guess we're paying her $50 for work in the criminal court, and then a $2,000 retainer for certain specified activities, and then an additional $150 fee for other items provided in her letter. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is there any particular reason why we're doing that, to the extent, couldn't we just provide a $2,000 retainer, and she could charge us an hourly fee after that?
I think maybe the city attorney might better answer that, but I believe there's certain services that are unknown that amount of time.
Yeah, that $2,000 retainer is for all routine matters. It doesn't have any top limit hour-wise on it.
Well, the way I read it, it looked like the $2,000 retainer was for specific activities, and then she had itemized listings for activities which would apply to the $150 hourly fee.
The $150 per hour is for extraordinary things like district court cases. That's all that's intended to apply to.
So it's not the standard agreement where she would go through the $2,000 retainer, and then we would pay an additional $150?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Anything that she's paid an extraordinary fee for would be approved by the city manager in advance, just like it is for me.
All right. I guess that looks like a complicated invoice, but I guess we're okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question also. Item F, Russell and Williams, how were they selected? Did it go out for bid, or what's the process to go by selecting these firms?
Typically, a RFQ process is utilized to select a firm to provide those kinds of services. That would have been done, as I was answering the question a moment ago, would have been done three years ago, and our intent is in the fourth year to go back out again and do that same process.
Thank you.
I did also have one question. We are paying IMSA from October and November of the last year. Any idea why the delay on that? And then are we actually held accountable for that, because it was last year's fiscal year?
There's a certain, JR, would you like to answer that question?
It came to our attention in the past 30 days that two of the months from last year had not been submitted, and once we had located those invoices and we processed them in finance, then I guess, Susan, we got them all booked, and they're set to pay, right?
We lost the invoices?
We do have it encumbered. It's actually last year's expense, so it will be on last year's books.
Okay.
I might answer the last part of your question, and that was, are we liable for last year's expenses? Under the law, there's a cutoff date of September 30th that people are directed to file any claims they have, and that notice was published in the newspaper, and this did meet that deadline. So it is a legal expenditure.
And I'd like to thank the city manager for supplementing the minutes of the last meeting to include some additional information. Thank you for doing that.
Is there any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question about E, under 1E. We have a police vehicle to be purchased. What fund is that out of?
That would be out of our, yes, sir.
And I have an authorization for Section, Part Par 1, Section G of the Posulon Engineering Contract with Matericon Consulting for testing material at the Bethany Blabberie site.
Yes, sir.
Should that not have been in the original contract, or are those people responsible to us?
This would be outside of the contract with a firm. This would be a separate contract that we would enter into in order to ensure that everything was being built.
For our assurance.
For our assurance, yes, sir. And it was, it is budgeted funds.
Anything else?
Wasn't that vehicle purchase coming out of impound funds?
That was, that is exactly the funds. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't answer that quite clearly, but it's the impound fund. Yes, sir.
That's what it said in the packet.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Ms. Tate, if you'll stand and face me and raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I instate your name.
Aye, Susan Tate.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Other valuable thing. For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as City Clerk of the City of Bethany.
My duties as City Clerk of the City of Bethany.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 3 is introduction of new Deputy Public Works Director, Philip Stowell.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you our new Deputy Public Works Director, Phil Stowell. Phil, I'm going to give you a little history about Phil. First, I want to start, he was with the City of Claremore for 19 and 1/2 years. He served as City Horticulturist, an arborist, City Forester. He was a community image superintendent for the City of Claremore, and he was a Director of Land Management and Community Image and Director of Community Services for Claremore. He then went on to the City of Collinsville, where he's come to join us just from. He was with them for a period of seven years. He had direct supervision over the streets, water, wastewater distribution and treatment, sanitation, cemetery parks, and code enforcement. He also served Collinsville as their Assistant City Manager. He is a graduate of Oklahoma State University with a bachelor's degree in horticulture. Phil is married, has been married for 20 years to a beautiful lady named Tracy. They have three children, Logan Mason and Morgan, and no grandbabies yet, he reports. So he's an avid martial arts instructor. He does Kenpo, karate, and he enjoys hunting, fishing, and camping. He's been a great addition. I will share too, I've known Phil for a number of years, and we were former neighbors years and years ago. It's a pleasure, and I think a great asset to our community that he's come to join us from Claremore. So, Phil, welcome aboard. Thanks, sir. Great to have you.
I believe Mr. Moore right here would like to challenge you in the martial arts.
No. Item 4 is a public hearing item.
It is, I believe we have a staff report. Is that correct?
Yes, Danielle, would you like to? Thank you.
Good evening. This is a rezoning request from the Children's Center, coming to you from P&amp;Z from a few weeks ago, and this is for rezoning for the Children's Center at 6800 Northwest 39th Expressway. They are currently zoned EI, and they are asking to be rezoned to CBD. Basically, this is just an expansion of the CBD to the east, or to the west, rather. It does meet, the lot does meet the applicable design standards for CBD. There, the existing water line pretty much is all around the property. Sewers also served the property as well. The paving has a two-lane residential on Beaver and 37th, and then a collector at Mueller, and then 39th Expressway to the north. The ordinance for creation of districts, the CBD zoning district designed, is designed to be the central business district for the community and surrounding areas. The area is defined by, as properties near the original town site of Bethany, the district is intended to provide space for retail professional offices, financial institutions, government offices, et cetera. So it does meet that ordinance as well. Oh, sorry, the allowable usage within CBD includes R1, R2, RM, the PRD, the CO, CR, and CG, so pretty much all your commercial and all your residential are allowed within the CBD. Here's kind of the zoning map, so you can see where the CBD abuts on the east side of the property. So basically, you're just going to be expanding to the west, not creating a new district. And here's an aerial photo. The comprehensive plan does call for downtown Bethany mixed-use district. This does include essentially the Children's Center area, pretty much from the east and west sides of the city, including from around 39th Expressway, and then north and south. There is an action item within the comp plan that discusses harnessing the momentum of the Children's Center, expanding, by expanding the CBD in that direction, basically saying that the Children's Center expansion can also add as a catalyst to additional redevelopment within the area. Here's the area within the comprehensive plan that talks about the downtown mixed-use district. And here's kind of the target district map. The planning and zoning recommendation was to recommend approval of the rezoning, and there still, to date, has not been any letters or phone calls opposing the rezoning. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions as well.
I've got some questions of the applicant.
Okay.
You can't be the applicant.
I'm Mark Long. I'm with Smith Roberts-Baldiswire. We're representing the Children's Center as the applicant's consultant during the rezoning application. Ms. Lori Boyd is here as well and can answer questions. We can answer any specific questions. Ms. Boyd did have a statement she'd like to make to the council at the appropriate time.
Sure.
Yeah, please.
So, one of the reasons we brought this at this time was to go ahead and move the comprehensive plan forward. So currently, we have a couple of properties that are already in the CBD district, but our main campus is not, so to be able to have all of it within the CBD district will be helpful. We will open the new tower on September 26th, and that will put us, in the next six months, over 800 employees. So it's that many people that are coming in and out of the city limits of Bethany. We have, we will be licensed for 160 beds at that time, so we will have all of those families that we will be serving, as well as, we see over 3,500 outpatients on an annual basis that come in and out for outpatient therapies, as well as for clinic. And so, the impact that we make is fairly large on the City of Bethany as far as the traffic that goes in and out. And the other thing is, right now, we do not have anything that we're building in the next, you know, five years, I'm hoping, as I finish this project right now. But being able to have mixed use for that property will be very helpful, so that we can do some other things with the frontage that we have on 39th Expressway. Did you have a specific question, Mr. Moore?
Well, I had a couple, but you kind of answered it. I'm kind of confused by your answer, but the purpose of this zoning change is to move the city's comprehensive plan forward.
So to continue, because one of the things that was in that comprehensive plan, and I was excited to be on that steering committee, was to increase the central business district and move it further towards Rockwell. And so, us going ahead and applying for the central business district helps us continue to move that plan forward.
We'll also go the other direction of 36th, I guess. Is that where the map starts? Or is it?
No.
The extent, the extent of the rezoning application is for the entire campus property that is bounded on the north of Northwest 39th Street, and then bounded by Northwest 37th Street.
I guess specifically, what is in CBD that is not any one that you're actually looking for?
So, in the master plan that the Children's Center has developed for the entire campus, this project that's currently underway was part of, is one of the final pieces. There are two or three more components to their master plan. They do plan to expand for some additional office or administrative doctor office support type roles for the bed tower that they're building now. In order to do that, if they want to do that along the frontage of Northwest 39th Street under the current zoning, if they wanted to put in some type of a retail outlet, like a coffee shop or a small restaurant, to serve that office need, they cannot do it under the current zoning that they're under. If we go under the central business district zoning, then they could provide that type of a mixed use on at least that parcel of property, or some other things that they may want to do as part of the master plan.
I applaud your support of the comp plan, and I'm glad to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mark, the P&amp;Z voted unanimously for this proposal, is that right?
That's correct.
I'm not against it. I just was curious. I've never heard that answer. It's a great answer. Come do more stuff that we need done. It's great.
Thank you.
I just noticed one thing I should have brought up before now, but on the application, page four, item four, the street address is listed as 6,900, and I think it's really 6,800, but that's mine.
That is correct.
That's correct.
So it does stop, it stops at the campus now, 30, was it 37th, 38th, or?
37th.
37th, okay.
Let me ask you this question. Is south of 37th, go back one slide to the, no, one more, to the colored area that shows the CBD, right there, right there. That pink in there is CBD. Is that correct?
The hatch area is.
So the only piece that is in, the not in CBD in that is the Children's Center. Looks like a strip that comes down Mueller Street from about 38th through 36th. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's still EI?
Yes. Well, I don't, let me look at the zoning map real quick. Yes, that would be, but that's a whole other, a whole other property over there.
Okay, that's still EI. So we're not being, the street that's below 37th Street to 36th Street is already CBD?
Yes, to the, basically, you see where that line is, just to the east of Mueller, that's the end of CBD right there. So essentially, the property's there is the dividing line, so Asbury and the properties that face Asbury would be in the CBD, but the properties that face Mueller would not be in the CBD.
Okay, okay.
Down to 37th.
And the 37th Street to 36th Street is not in CBD?
That's correct.
So the only thing that you're planning to put into the Children's Convalescence Center there that shows EI would be what has been delineated up to now offices and just possibly a coffee shop, or any uniform shop or something, in this order, okay? And that would go into CBD. I'm more concerned that we might have housing go in that area at 12 units per acre, or above 12 units per acre, because that can come into CBD.
So, right now, in the master plan for the Children's Center, there's no housing component to the mixed-use proposed projects. Right now, it's.
At the present time.
That's correct.
Is there not, is there not something in there for additional 120 family beds to be added?
Well, the hospital beds.
Oh, okay, I thought, family beds, I assumed.
No, hospital beds.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1939, amending the zoning of 6,800 Northwest 39th Expressway from E1 to CBD.
First, do we have, because this is a public hearing, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? And this is, item 4A, is approval of ordinance number 1939. I'm reading by title only.
Is that true?
Second.
Do you read it?
Give me a vote.
Okay. I'm always messing those up.
Please cast your votes.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and map of the City of Bethany, Oklahoma, by including in CBD central business use district, the property described as part of Block 19, the original town of Bethany, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, has more specifically described here and after, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance has one enacting section, which is the rezoning, and then a separate emergency clause. Just voting on B. Yeah, you've got to vote on B first. Do we have a motion on item 4B?
I think Palmer made the motion.
Well, he made the motion to read by title only, I think.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance as a whole.
And I will second it.
Please cast your votes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we move forward, is, of the applicant, is there an emergency? Is there something pressing that requires an emergency?
So item 4C is emergency clause. Do I have a motion with emergency clause? Item 4, item 4 has been approved, other than it being an emergency. Item 5 is approval of ordinance number 1940. I believe we have a staff report for this. of ordinance number 1940. I believe we have a staff report for this also.
Yes, I would like to invite forward the director of the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority, Glenn Brentenell.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Brentenell. I'm the general manager of the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. The Public Works Authority is a public trust formed between the city of Bethany and the city of War Acres to provide wastewater services, sewer treatment. We do that at the Bluff Creek Treatment Plant. And we've been approached by Devon Energy about the possibility of selling our treated wastewater to them. And this is a great opportunity to recap some of the money that it costs to treat that wastewater. Right now, the water is cleaned up and discharged into Bluff Creek where it continues down the creek for other uses. We've discussed this quite a bit with our public trust. Our trustees are members of the city of Bethany and city of War Acres. The mayor and the city manager are on our trust, and the mayor of War Acres, and the city clerk. And there's a floating member that flips back and forth from year to year. This year, the member from Bethany is Mr. Phil Shirey. Next year, War Acres will choose the fifth trustee. Do I have any questions?
Glenn, I just want to clarify something I believe I've heard in the past when I was on that trust. The water that is just discharged after it's been cleaned is essentially cleaner than the water that's already flowing down the creek. Is that?
That, that's accurate, yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not drinking water clean, but it's clean enough for us to discharge into the environment. The state has different parameters for the uses of the stream. One of those would be a fishery. People come by and they fish in the stream. We don't want them to get sick, so we have to clean the water enough so that when they catch a fish and they eat it, people may come by and swim in that stream. So we, we want them to be able to swim in that stream, even downstream, a mile or two miles. So we have to meet the standards that they won't get sick from that. Agricultural uses along with the environment and wildlife and fish. So we, we produce pretty good water. And it's about 3 million gallons a day combined between Bethany and between War Acres. We treat about 3 million gallons every day.
Glenn, if I could ask you to kindly, earlier today, as you mentioned, we had, we had a trust meeting, and we had considerable conversation of, a question that's of interest, at least in our community, and maybe you can address that. With there being potential future revenue flows, additional revenue flows into the trust, is the matter that is being considered tonight, is that somehow tied to those future revenue flows and what happens to them? Or are they two separate matters and that those future revenue flows that the trust could declare a future dividend and, and handle those monies?
Correct.
Would you address that?
This ordinance doesn't do, address anything about the money that would be coming into the public trust. That would have to be decided later by my trustees on what to do with that money. There's all sorts of options that they could have. They could decide to do a rate holiday or a dividend returned to the city, or they could decide to save that money for future improvements at the treatment plant. We're 20 years old now, and it was quite expensive to build our plant in the past. We had to pass some bonds for about $14 million. It caused a rate increase to the city of Bethany and to the citizens of War Acres to pay for those bonds. I would hope that the city council and trustees would have the wisdom to plan for the future. But that, that's something that would have to be decided in the future. This, this ordinance and what to do with those additional funds, it's not being decided tonight.
And, and the decision made on this has no tie to that at all. The, whatever's decided tonight, then the trustees are still free to make future decisions on the-
Absolutely, yes.
So if you could, you're going to decide how to split the money?
No, I will not.
No, I understand that. Let me, let me finish my-
Sorry.
-comment, please. At some point in time, if we pass this ordinance, the authority will determine the proportionate share to the city of Bethany and the city of War Acres from this income. Is that right?
Yes, they could.
And is that what we're voting on tonight, or will that be later on through the authority?
What we're trying to do is move forward with this project. We're not deciding what to do with any monies that may come from this project. We're not far enough along yet to know what monies we will get from this project, but we hope to get about $1 million a year. We're not deciding tonight what to do with that money. We're just allowing the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority the clear authority to sublease the property to make this project go forward. We need a pond to store this water and so that it can be then pumped out west.
And that property is owned by the city of Bethany, right?
It is, yes, it is owned by the city of Bethany, leased to the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority for the treatment of wastewater. So there's some concern that if, does the sale of this wastewater and the storage of this wastewater, is that part of that original lease of treatment of wastewater? So we want to clearly define the trust's authority to sublease this property for this sale.
Well, what is the impact on the pond when Devon does whatever it's going to do with the water?
It will improve the pond immensely. The pond is currently abandoned and unused and grown up in weeds, and they're going to deepen it and widen it, increase its height and line it.
So if the city owns the property and under the current lease agreement to the trust, we cannot sublease it out to this, into the, to Devon operating?
The trust cannot.
The trust cannot. So we are not, we don't receive compensation or minimal compensation for the rental of the property back to the trust, correct? Is that compensation very minimal, if any at all?
The benefit that you receive is the sewer treatment for the citizens of Bethany.
Correct.
There's no monetary compensation.
Correct. So this being our property, and there is monetary tied to this, yes, I know we're going to get the, the sale of the water, but our current lease does not include using this pond for other things. And so our lease, I believe, is for $10 a year for this pond to go in. But since this is our property, should that lease not be more? We, our original, we're, the trust uses it at no charge, which, yes, we do benefit from that. But right now, it's not set up. So now we're taking our extra property up there and now using it for another purpose.
That begs the question, why is it just $10?
We get the benefit of selling the water, is mostly that, and I think it was $10,000 was the lease.
Was it?
I'm not sure. I wasn't involved in the negotiation of the lease.
It's in here.
That's for the pipeline easement.
There is a separate item there.
Let me see if I can bring some clarity to what we're talking about here. I have-
I thought they were both $10 for the pipeline easement and the property easement.
That's just a nominal amount that's typically placed in a deed or a lease or, normally, you don't state the exact consideration in our document that you record in the courthouse. Like when you bought your house, it probably says you paid $1 or $10 for it, but that really wasn't what you paid. But let me see if I can add some clarity here. The purpose of this is to amend the lease, to extend the term of it, to match the term that Devon wants to buy the water, and it also clarifies the lease to make it clear that the trust can sublease to the third party, which is Devon. And that specifically is important in the agreement. The, there is no consideration to the city for either of these in the purported documents. The theory being that whatever money comes out of this transaction will go to the trust, and it will be the trust's money, and you and War Acres are the beneficiary of the trust. So it's, it's actually your money. But here's, here's the, here's the thing. I've heard, these pieces that you're getting ready to approve are the final stumbling blocks in the way of this matter being put together. But at this point, there is no agreement on who gets the money or how they get it. The trust will decide that, I assume, at some point. I've heard comments that Bethany ought to get part of it, War Acres ought to get part of it, the trust ought to get part of it. None of that has been resolved. And once you approve these documents, the, the trust is in the driver's seat at that point, and they'll decide how the money's divided. But you must remember, the trust is governed by who sets, the mayor, the city manager, Bethany's designated delegate on a revolving year basis, or the city of War Acres, and their, their representatives, that they have a permanent representative in the mayor, and then they have a revolving. So it will still be something that will, can be talked out at a later date.
But the big question, we, the city of Bethany, by allowing the use of the pond, should get credit in some way when they distribute the funds, if and when that is taking place? And if we don't get that-
Actually, for the original lease of this whole tract of land, there was no consideration for that either. That was a mutual agreement. Actually, that land was, it was kind of a complicated transaction, but that land was originally Bethany's, and there was a third party that operated the sewer treatment plant for Bethany. And then that trust, I don't remember what year it was, bought the interest of that third party, and all of this property was released from that third party, and then it was leased by Bethany to the trust with no additional consideration. So the theory at the time was that this serves the sewer needs of both parties, and there was no talk at that time of consideration for the original lease even.
And I get and understand that, but now we're using part of the extra property for a new purpose. That was my only point.
I've, I've been drinking from a fire hose for six months now as the mayor of Bethany. I'll admit it. And so I'm trying to learn everything I can as quickly as I can before drowning. But in this particular situation, it was, like you said, it was Bethany, it's Bethany's land, and now that, we lease it to the trust. And Glenn had said that what Bethany receives out of that, it being our land, is that our, our sewer gets treated. So I'm looking at Bethany has more invested, obviously, than War Acres does in regards to what we've got in it. We have the land, and we put in more sewer into it, correct? Today, you said two-thirds versus there one-third?
Two-thirds, correct.
Okay.
Glenn, do you have any way to measure which city's putting in what amount?
By the billing.
By the what?
By the billing. The dollar amount is based on the, the winter average on the sewer rates. And it, it comes out to about two-thirds. Bethany's about two-thirds the population, uses about two-thirds of the water, pays about two-thirds of the revenue for that treatment, and War Acres pays the other third. We get a little bit of revenue from our, some customers that were in Oklahoma County or now in Oklahoma City. We collect from them directly.
Is that a factor that'll be considered in how we distribute the income from Devon once it's received?
One of the things that we talked about with the trustees is we've always returned some money to the cities of Bethany and War Acres through what we call a rate holiday. Every month, Bethany pays us the billings for the sewer service.
Why wouldn't it be a factor?
I didn't say it wasn't a factor. It is a factor. And, and any, any way that the trust decides to distribute this money, they can decide that. My trustees, the mayor, city council. But currently, we return one month's, what would be revenue to us, back to the cities. So instead of paying 12 monthly payments for a year's worth of service, you pay 11. So that makes an equal distribution of what you've paid in, you're, you're getting that back, and, and we've done that for years now.
Yeah, but don't you think Bethany should get two-thirds of the revenue from Devon because of their participation in the authority?
If we continue with these rate holidays, the way we have been, they would be. And, and yes, I absolutely do believe that. Since you're paying two-thirds of the money in, you should get two-thirds of whatever's decided as a dividend, correct?
Glenn, I heard you say earlier that this pond is going to be lined. Help me to understand what I think I know. Who pays for that lining? Because that's a fairly expensive process.
Devon is going to pay for all of the improvements. Well, we will not, as a trust, public trust or the city of Bethany, incur any costs for any of these improvements.
And I heard you say they're going to pipe it someplace. Is that their nickel also?
All of it is Devon's nickel, correct. Including helping us with permitting and engineering. They're paying for everything.
So if they're doing the, the lining, they're giving us a certificate of insurance, I imagine?
Yes.
Naming us as additional insured?
Yes.
Glenn, one question. Any idea how Devon will use that water?
They're going to be using it in fracking in western Oklahoma.
That's, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Well, you know, you can clarify that is, they don't have to pump water out of the water aquifers in western Oklahoma, which are being depleted at a rapid rate, and this is something-
We anticipate this to be a-
A win-win situation.
We, we anticipate this to be, what Mr. Shirey says, a win-win situation. At the time that Devon no longer needs this water for their energy production, we're going to have the infrastructure and a pipeline and a water spigot of 25 million gallons a day of water in western Oklahoma. And western Oklahoma needs water. We, we hope to be able to find another customer at that time.
Now, the rates already been negotiated, is what we're-
Yes, that's, that's where we got that $1 million a year figure from, is those rates have been already figured. I believe it's a dollar six per thousand.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer a couple of thoughts?
Yes.
So as I mentioned at the very beginning, we, we did discuss this at length, and some of you heard some of that conversation that occurred today. I am one of the city of Bethany's appointees to the board, as the mayor and, and council member Shirey are. And we, we represent this year three of five board members that are on the trust. So when you say the trust, it's not some nefarious group that's out there, it's us. And next year, it'll be three members from War Acres and two from Bethany, and it goes back and forth each year. But I'd like to offer a couple of thoughts for you all. I, we're all interested in the best interests of our community, but I think that it's, it's important to remember that when we take a look at the numbers and are starting to make decisions about how the monies are going to, are going to flow out, we, we want Bethany to benefit, but we don't want the trust to go under either. We want to make sure that it's long-term and viable. We made investments, our community did, long before I think any or most of us were around. And we wish for the sewer treatment system to be, to be operational for many, many years to come. And so I think it's incumbent upon the board of trustees to look at what are today's needs, what are tomorrow's needs, what are 10, 15 years down the road, what those needs are. And it, I think we might think about another way, rather than just what, what is this, this million dollar thing going to represent to us today, but more, more on the, the idea of long-term, what could it represent, maybe by, by allowing the trust to make the decision to take a look at what their capital uses and needs are for today, tomorrow, and the 10 years I was talking about a moment ago. And then make it, they, they make a decision on, okay, we decided that X number of dollars could be made available to pay for, as dividends back to the cities, then the, then that decision would be made at that time. But for us to preload that today, I think we're, we're getting maybe a little bit ahead of ourselves. What we need to make, ensure, my recommendation to you, what we need to really be focused on today is making sure we can do everything we can to facilitate this deal to happen so that that revenue does come in, and that down the road, then we can take a look at and how that dividend gets declared. As Glenn mentioned a moment ago, some time ago, years ago, the decision was made to do this rate holiday. By doing the rate holiday, as I understand, it does get divvied up two-thirds to one-third, just because that's the way it is paid in. I asked a question, though, today. You know, I know that decision was made a long time- time ago, but maybe we ought to look at the numbers again and see if that still makes sense for us today. And I think we need to have that conversation, but I don't think today is the day for that. I think we're preloading that, and I think that that day will come down the road when we see how the numbers start coming in, we see how the deal comes together with Devon, and then we will know what kind of numbers we have to work with. So, that represents my recommendation to you all, is let's move forward with what we have. We'll worry about the way that split works out in the day yet to come.
What is that day? When is that deadline?
I don't know if deadline is the correct word that I would use on that. I think, I think the day is in the future. We're probably, what, Glenn, a year and a half away from Devon's project up and running, if everything falls into place?
Yeah, when I was approached, when I was approached a year ago, they wanted to be buying water today. They figured out that, working with public entities, DEQ Corporation Commission, really has slowed down their timetable. We don't have a good idea of when we might get paid for our first gallon. But, I also want to emphasize that when this money does start coming in, Bethany is represented on our trust to decide where those revenues go. But, we hope within a year, year and a half, that we'll start selling our water.
Was that the term of this thing? We've made a lot of decisions 30 years ago based, that we wish we hadn't have made in Bethany, lots. I mean, is that, 30 years seems like an awful long time without any outs or anything, or contingencies or anything?
It's, yeah, but you kind of have to look at it on their side, their capital investments that they're going to be laying out to move this project forward. If in five years Bethany has an out, this project's not going forward. They'll find another way to get other water from other sources. If, if we can't guarantee that this project can move forward 10, 15, 20 years down the road, it's just not, it's just not feasible to them.
Well, what if they decide in 10 years, they found another method, there's another type of, whatever method, not fracking another method, and they don't need it after 10 years? Do they, they still have 20 years of us being tied to a lease?
No, no.
But we also have customers in western Oklahoma that will want this water out of this pipeline, which becomes ours.
Correct. They no longer own, they would lose their lease at that time. It's in a five-year option. If, after 10 years, they no longer want our water, they lose that lease.
Okay, so they have outs, or we both have outs then?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a minimum requirement of their type?
For the sale of the water?
Yeah.
Yes, what we did was, we built in some, they told us that they want to take all of our 3 million gallons a day, every day, 365 days a year. We asked them for some guarantees. They guaranteed that they would take half of that water and pay for it, whether they took it or not.
So this measure just lays the groundwork for those negotiations to continue? Would that be accurate, David?
No, we've already, we are, the trust has already made an agreement for the sale of the water. This lets the project move forward. Right now, we envision having the pond on the property out there, that they have a lease to that property, and they get an easement for the pipeline to move the water out. Without those things, this project doesn't move forward. And it doesn't, what we're not, we're not deciding today what to do with that money coming in. We're just saying, we want part of this deal. We want to be partners in this.
At that, let's say at 10 years, they decided they're out, they don't want it, we get the pipe. Is this subleasing agreement between Bethany and the, and the trust for that, this particular portion, null and void then? I mean, does that make sense?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe it does.
The document is specific to Devon, so-
So we would have to come up with another-
Sublease to someone other than Devon. No, it wouldn't, wouldn't apply.
Okay, there you go.
I would like to follow up on one thing that was mentioned. I would hope that, we have no control over that, that's the trust, which is partly us. But I would hope that the trusts and the operations are considering operating it today, tomorrow, and 10 years down the road, based off of the revenues that we're not already counting on money. We've operated this for the last 50 years, based off of sewer rates, and they've never had this additional revenue before. And I would hope that they continue to operate based off of what the actual customer rates being paid in are.
Absolutely. I always try and budget conservatively, so that we know what expenses are going to go out, and we know what revenue's coming in. I haven't budgeted this money in, and not until that money's coming in will I put it in the budget. And then at that time-
Please, please understand, your revenue, given your track record, is something we're very interested in. That's why we're giving you all these questions.
I don't mind the questions.
With that, you ready for a motion? I'll make a motion for reading number 1940 by title only.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Bear with me, this is long. An ordinance of authorizing the city of Bethany to grant amendment number two to that certain lease to Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority for sewer treatment facilities property, being a part of the southwest quarter, section 23, township 14 North, range four west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, and to grant a permanent pipeline easement to Devon Energy Production Company, LP, and certain property, being a part of the southwest quarter, section 23, township 14 North, range four west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, for a purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a system for storage and transportation of treated wastewater, providing for repealer inseverability, providing for right of referendum, and providing an effective date. This ordinance is a little different than your typical ordinance, because of a provision in your charter that requires if you sell property or an interest in property valued at more than $10,000, it has to have a non-emergency ordinance that grants a 30-day period for the citizens to seek a right of referendum, and that's, that's included in section four. So, the motion to approve this would be approval of sections one through four.
I will make a motion to approve sections one through four of ordinance 1940.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item six, it's another public hearing item. Approval of ordinance number 1941. Do we have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, this item is being prepared for you, that will hopefully modernize, update, and provide consistency with our new comprehensive plan. And with that, I would like to invite our city engineer, Steve Caton, to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. As you said, this is a, an item to consider revisions to chapter 155 of the code of ordinance, which is the site plan ordinance. Our current site plan ordinance is based on the policies of the old comprehensive plan from back in 1972. As you know, IBTS has been retained to craft some new enacting ordinances for Comp Plan 2030, but that process is going to take anywhere from six to 24 months, depending on how that happened. Our site plan ordinance has frequently been criticized as outdated, overreaching, and at least partially responsible for some of the less-than-optimum commercial development in Bethany. These proposed changes we're going to go over were designed to provide some temporary relief from the most problematic sections of the current ordinance, while not compromising any public safety or modern development practices. Again, I want to stress that these were just, hopefully, temporary measures until the new ordinances are crafted to become one with the comprehensive plan goals. You've all got the site, or the packet in your packet, and I don't want to read all the stuff to you. We can discuss it as we go along, but basically, I'll summarize the sections. 155.01A is just change the words city planner to community development director. That's just a housekeeping language to change to current staffing. 151, 15501A is also, talks about council approval. I would like to defer discussion until a little later on that one. 5504A, again, changes city planner to community development director, and the words registered to licensed for design professionals. Again, just language changes for modern, or for current staffing and state laws. 15504B, again, city planner to community development director. So we've taken care of all that housekeeping, which moves us to 15504B3. This removes the requirement to upgrade existing street pavement. It does not remove the requirement to give us right-of-way. Only says if there's an existing paved roadway, you do not have to bring that roadway up to current city standards. This has been one of the most onerous site plan items there ever is, because rebuilding pavement is extremely expensive. This, again, would allow someone to continue to develop without having to upgrade to the current Portland cement concrete, curb and gutter, and all that. It does keep the right-of-way, as I mentioned. In that way, we get the right-of-way in case we do want to upgrade later ourselves, or add water, sewer, or something else that might be out in the right-of-way. It also, that section also removes the requirement to upgrade a water line if there is an adequate fire hydrant within 300 feet, and that hydraulic analysis shows adequate water surface can be provided with the existing. Our current ordinance would require a minimum of six-inch water line. Maybe there's only a four-inch there. Hydraulic analysis shows it's enough for domestic water for the proposed use, and there's a good hydrant down at the end of the block, within 300 feet. This would allow them to move forward with the site plan without having to do a full water line rehabilitation. Again, another very expensive proposition. The section also removes the water, sewer, and street paving requirements for a site plan that only involves a parking lot. It does not remove the requirements to do a drainage study. So that way, we don't, we're adding impervious area for parking, they still have to account for the drainage. It, that's section 15504C eliminates the provision for council approval of deficient site plans. What that means is, the only way to get a pathway to permitting is to comply with all of the requirements of the ordinance. The current ordinance, if someone doesn't want to do something, they can come to the council and say, I don't want to do that. And you guys can basically tell them they don't have to do that. This would remove that, and it would, the new ordinance would say, no, if you want a site plan approval, you have to comply with all the requirements. You've removed most of the onerous ones, but you're going to have to stick to it and get the rest of them done. That's that part. That section also provides a new appeal process for site plans. If the director's decision is questioned, that decision may be appealed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That new appeal process does not provide a mechanism to waive any of the provisions of chapter 155. It only provides relief from an erroneous, unreasonable, arbitrary, or capricious decision by the director. If they think the director made a mistake in his interpretation, that can be appealed. If they just don't want to do something, that can't be appealed. Finally, 155.07H adds clarifying language to the appeal section of the landscape ordinance, to clarify that that part of the appeal is only for the landscape. Another just kind of a language cleanup. This item was heard by Planning and Zoning on May 4th, and again on June 1st. They voted unanimously, seven to zero, to recommend approval of the ordinance as you have it in your packet. That's all I have tonight. If you'd like to ask questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I've got a question. I understand the idea of streamlining and taking a hard line, too, so there's no politics, basically. Somebody comes in and they know somebody, and, you know, they do whatever they want. But, taking a hard line, in this language, we would not have On-Q, we would not have On-Q. Is that correct?
I don't believe that would be correct.
Because they had to come for exceptions, and they would not have had the option to make this to come for exceptions.
I'm not sure what, the only thing I can think of with On-Q that might not have been was the right-of-way, but they did provide a, an easement in lieu of the right-of-way. But I'm not sure if that's-
There was easements, there were, there was DMT, there was, there were several things we had to do. Let's say that they, we took away whatever option, that somebody would normally come like an On-Q. This could keep somebody from having the ability to appeal to us.
It, I prefer the way the city manager puts it. It kind of takes the city council out of a lose-lose situation, where you have to tell one person, no, you have to comply with all the ordinance, but you get to tell someone else, oh, you don't have to comply with the city ordinance. That's really not a great place for the council to be. I understand your question, Mr. Moore, that maybe it's desirable sometimes to grant exceptions, but on the other hand, there are people would think that's not necessarily the way we want it to be.
I agree with you 100%. I'd agree with Jenny, too, but we're trying to grow a lot right now. I mean, theoretically, to follow it out to its logic, Walmart, I mean, somebody like that would not have the ability to appeal to us. I mean, under changing that.
Theoretically, something like Walmart was coming in, you could easily have a emergency session of this council to change that regulation if we wanted to.
We're removing that.
No, that would not be, they would not be giving an exception from the compliance. You could actually change the ordinance and the requirements for compliance.
But that goes up, that's up to the gatekeeper of information, if we never even hear about it. That's what I'm saying. We may never even have the opportunity to hear about it, based on the gatekeeper that would bring that information to us.
I, I can't imagine a situation where a Walmart, or a Lowe's, or an On-Q would be shy at all.
I was following it out to its example, but I'm just saying, we wouldn't have that opportunity. Just removing that opportunity is all in that.
This, this would remove the automatic, if, right now, someone just doesn't want to do it. If they want to just take this piece of paper, write "site plan" on the back and turn it in, and everything about it's deficient, they have the right to come to the council and say, we don't want to do anything, we want to build whatever we want, and if five people say yes, they can get that site plan approved.
And we've all seen that happen.
We're removing that option under the current ordinance.
I just don't want to throw every opportunity out. Trying to take such a hard line is all.
I understand.
Mr. Caton, can you explain again the appeal process and how that would work?
Yes. Let's say, for instance, someone didn't want to do drainage. They just don't, I don't want to spend the money on an engineer, and it's just ridiculous that we have to do it, and I would say, well, then I'm not going to give you the site plan. At that point, they could say, you're misinterpreting the ordinance, and appeal that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would be much like a hearing, I would present, I would show where it says they have to provide all the drainage, what they have to demonstrate, all those other things. They would come up and say, no, he's missing, he's misinterpreting that ordinance, and the city, the P&amp;Z would make that determination.
But there's no more appeal after the P&amp;Z's decision?
I don't know. Would there be a district court? District court?
There is not. I mean, P&amp;Z is a recommending body, I don't know if it's got authority to approve that. I mean, there really is no appeal.
In this case, it would be appeal of the director's decision. If they, if they determine that the director was wrong or capricious, they could overturn his decision and, and say he was wrong. You don't have to provide 50 parking places, you only have to provide 40, or whatever, if there was a, no, the P&amp;Z could do that.
And then from the P&amp;Z, they could file an action in district court-
If, yes.
-in order to interpret the ordinance or the, or the site plan, or whatever that is at that point in time?
That's correct.
So I think, changing some of the requirements, lessening them up with the water, the water line, the fire hydrants, and the street, I think that's mainly almost everything that came to council previously for changes. But, I would offer up a suggestion, then, to move forward with everything else but keeping in place the city council appeal. This whole chapter is being rewritten anyway over the next 12 to 24 months, and that would give us some time to make sure that there is no unintended consequences by eliminating the city council for appeal. And I, I don't foresee projects actually coming to the council once we make some of these other changes.
May I offer a thought, Mr. Mayor?
One point, one point of order is, Mr. Caton, you are currently acting as the community development director?
That is correct.
And aren't we actively seeking resumes and looking for a community development director at this time?
Boy, I sure hope so.
Yes, sir, we are. Mr. Caton, would you kindly address for council? I think they sometimes have not heard some of the things that have come before you, and the difficult position that perhaps you've been placed in, where someone doesn't wish to follow the ordinances, sort of like someone maybe doesn't wish to follow a speeding law, and they say, well, I don't really wish to, to do that. and they say, "Well, I don't really wish to do that, when's my date in front of council?" Is that a true-
It would be, it's almost more likely that that happens than not. When we sit down and go over the 26 items that we're going to discuss about a site plan, it is almost without fail. They don't want to do certain things about it because they don't want to spend that much money and-
And I guess I would throw on to that too as a, maybe just a friendly thought on that, that I think would be much better served to go ahead and tighten things up for now. We can watch for, if there's some sort of thing that has slipped through that we're not aware of, then we can bring it to your attention. But I think this will help the overall process. If we have, if we have rules in place, you all have taken the active position of passing those rules, then to just say, "Well, they're out the window," just because somebody wishes not to do those rules, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. What makes more sense is that if there's something that is erroneous or a nuisance like we found out or we're proposing to you to consider changing, then we should change our rules, but we shouldn't just throw the rules out at everybody that walks through. It's my thought.
One recent one that came to us was Bethany Public Schools, and this is very minor they could overcome, but for instance, they have a dumpster pad across the street and they didn't want a dumpster at the new STEM building, and we gave them an exception on that. It was very minor. It didn't take up, what, one to two parking stalls of parking, and they had adequate dumpster across the street. So there could be some minor things like that, but-
I agree, and I know exactly what you're saying, and it will cure a lot of the problems we've had and most, or a few of us here remember, know exactly what you're talking about. There are certain entities and persons in Bethany that have operated for 20 or 30 years of, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission just to start a project and will file a building permit later, which is the craziest we've ever heard of, but they always get their way, always get their way, they'll build on top of a easement, you know.
And that's where we have to end.
And I understand that will stop that because, at least with you it will, because nothing's going to get past you, I know. But it would stop that and it would take the pressure off anyone that felt pressure to rubber stamp certain groups.
Mr. Caden, wouldn't it be fair to say the vast things, the vast majority of things that come to us though are the street improvements and water lines?
That's always the one because the money amounts are so large for streets and water lines and things like that.
In the old part of Bethany, of course, you've got the right of way wits as well.
Right.
That's a big, that'll be a big issue for anything in the old town.
This is primarily based upon communication, and if we don't have communication, especially to the PNC or from the PNC to the city council related to this, it's counterproductive. And if that doesn't happen, you know, we're not going to get anywhere in a fast way. So I think that's something that should be considered by the city council.
One question, sorry. The paving or hard surface covenant, could somebody build a house and just use gravel if we changed this for their drive? I mean, they don't have to do any-
Right now, of course, the driveway approach has to be six inches of Portland cement concrete and all that. The driveway itself has to be a hard surface paving.
Okay, I thought this got rid of the curb and gutter or some of those-
A single-family residence doesn't go through this process anyway.
Right, single-family, two-family residential are exempt from site plan requirements.
Okay.
They're not exempt from ordinances though?
No, but they are exempt from chapter 155 ordinances.
One thing about 155 ordinances, we were, we were talking about streets. Up until this time, you had to, if you wanted, you didn't want to replace a street and we didn't care whether you replaced a street or not, you had to put up a bond.
You had to enter into a restrictive covenant.
Restrictive covenant. Does this do away with that?
This would make them unnecessary, yes. You could still do it, but there would be no real reason to do that.
But so then in that case, if somebody, if this does away with it and they go ahead and complete their project, then the city is going to be responsible for paving in front of their property that they should have been required to pave when they got their permit.
Mr. Davis, how long do the covenants last, 27 years?
Well, they are 21-year covenants.
21 years. You've been here longer than that, Mr. Shirey. Can you recall ever calling a paving covenant? I cannot.
I've been here a long time and there has been-
One?
I'll have to go with you on that.
I think it was, it was at 50th and Rockwell where that little strip shopping center is. They paved the Rockwell in front of that shopping center.
So-
So it's, I mean, you said it's very expensive-
Yes.
And we are very tight on budget most of the time because I feel that somebody that lives clear across town shouldn't be paying for somebody's pavement in another part of town.
And then that's certainly one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, A, the cost might make the project not feasible, and many times, just the uncertainty of having to come to the council and ask for the covenant, they're uncertain, they don't know whether you're going to say yes or no, and that just can be a very large, I mean, you know, 100,000-plus part of the project and they don't know the answer. It's hard for them to move forward and do their planning when there's that uncertainty, and this would remove that uncertainty.
Well, I would say a better, something better than that would say that we'll allow you to put up a covenant for 21-year covenant and go ahead with the project because it comes to us and we will just, you know, roll over and say, "Go ahead with the 21-year covenant," knowing full well, but if it's needed and it's required beforehand and then it's needed someplace down the road, these people have got to put up the money to do that that they should have done to start with. And I think it's, I think it's giving them a break more than, well, it's not giving them a break, it's, "Hey, you don't have to do it."
And there have been quite a few that they were going to ask for a covenant, and when we pointed out that the physical situation would make it very hard for the council to say yes, they went ahead and actually reconstructed the street. That's happened more often than we would think. Simmons Automotive just did a reconstruction because it was on the corner, the other's half was already been reconstructed, and so they did theirs because they weren't very confident that this body would say yes to a covenant. Southern Plaza on 37th Street the same way, they did half-street and we did the other half. So there have been numerous times that we actually got the entity to actually do the street reconstruction.
Which is good.
Well, we paid for half of 37th Street-
That's correct.
-the city of Bethany.
That's correct, but they paid for their half.
And the entity that was on their side of the street paid for theirs.
That's correct. Same thing with First Baptist Church on the rest of 37th.
But it made a much better-looking project-
Right, but-
And the people that were doing that says, "This makes us a much better citizen of the city of Bethany to do it." And if we had have done it the other way, they couldn't have got these 18-wheel trucks that they back in to unload groceries with at their location.
Again, there are pluses and minuses on both sides. The point of these proposed amendments to offer a temporary relief in between now the old comp plan and the old ordinances and the new comp plan and the new ordinances. These are the most onerous of the site plan issues, and these are some solutions that might get us through this interim period.
I've got one more question, sorry to drag this out, Steve. In the past, let's roll the clock back.
Okay.
Last five incidents that we're talking about, you can think of a few of them. Let's say somebody decided not to file a site plan and started work anyways, and we had, and we changed for this. Then they come, the inspector shows up and they come and they file for, they file their site plan after the fact that it's not up to speed, or they come and file for a permit, are they going to get a permit or are they not?
No, you can't get a permit until your site plan has been approved.
And if their site plan is not approved-
Then they can't get a building permit.
Yeah, so just because we would stop work.
That's never happened.
Oh.
Mr. Caden, is it true that the PNC unanimously approved this?
Seven to zero.
And ultimately, they're going to be the party who's going to mediate, mitigate, whatever you want to call, these site plan issues?
Mr. Palmer, they actually, it was proposed to have the board of adjustment, who's the appeal body for all the others, be the appeal for this, and they actively sought out, since they have experience with site plans, that they chose to make themselves the appeal body, yes.
So we're expanding the authority of the PNC also?
Yeah, I don't think they had, yeah, they could appeal a zoning issue before, yeah.
That's correct.
Regardless of what the community development director, the new person may do or not do, the PNC is a check on his assessment to determine the best interests of the city of Bethany. Is that true?
Or at least his interpretation of the ordinances that were passed by this body in the best interests of the city, yes.
And then they have no recourse?
Except for district court.
I know, I understand the political pressure, but taking it off of the city council, but to give a recommending body new authorities that are unelected, that I don't get.
But again, these are not exemption authorities, these are just whether or not I or whoever the real director is made a mistake. That's really all that's said. If it's on, the rules of decision are essentially if staff has made a mistake, that's what they're appealing. They're not appealing whether or not they have to do something, they're just appealing whether or not the staff has made a mistake.
And this is a public hearing item?
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions with Mr. Caden, does anybody have any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? So item 6A, it's approval of ordinance 1941 on reading by title only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
An ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 155 of the Bethany Code of Ordinances pertaining to site plan approvals and requirements, providing for scope, certificate of occupancy required, submission of site plan when required, conditions for approval, perpetual compliance, appeal procedure for site plan requirements, facade requirements, commercial, industrial, and central business district landscaping requirements, method of appeal from landscaping requirements, providing for repeal and severability, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance has three enacting sections and a separate Section 4, which is the emergency
Do I have a motion for approval of sections 1 through 3 of ordinance 1941?
I wouldn't make a motion for approval, but amending it to where we, you may have to help me with this attorney, to where we still leave in the city council being able to make changes to the site plans.
My suggestion would be that maybe it might be more appropriate for your motion to be to table it and direct staff to revise that section because I would hate to give you the exact wording right now because that would be a little different than what's currently stated in there. I'd have to, pardon me, have to prepare that language, so I think that'd be a more appropriate motion would be to table this item, directing staff to leave in the provision granting city council the authority to grant exceptions. Is that, is that what you're saying?
But then, being a public hearing, we'll have to advertise it again for the next meeting then?
No, no, he can come right back to you.
Without notice in public hearing?
Yes, he can come back at your next meeting.
John, I agree with you, but I'm torn. I don't know what they're trying to accomplish, and it's almost, you know, you have to wait to-
We are lightening up most everything. I don't foresee anything coming to us, to be honest, because we are lightening up most of the loads. And then this is going to be written in the next 12 to 24 months, and if all things went well, there was no unintended consequences, we can make the change at that time.
I'm just concerned that we're closing all ability to appeal any decision and making them go to the district court. It's like, why are we sitting here?
And I think the motion I'm trying to make will change that to where still, that's exactly what I'm after.
So we want to give them the right to appeal to the city council. To somebody in the city and not have to go to the district court.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. May I ask a question? Just as a clarifying on how we revise this, would you all be agreeable to us revise it to where they must at least first explore and attempt to meet all the provisions of the ordinance before just say, "Well, I just don't want to comply with all these items." That's what I think is what we're just concerned about, is that they just don't want to comply. And so there should be some sort of attempt to comply with some sort of-
I think if we leave, and I'm not sure the number, but it's Part C, it's going to be 155.04, number 6C. If we leave C written just the way it is, that has a line out, and eliminate the bold what was proposed for changes.
Can you repeat that, please, sir?
155.04, number 6, Part C. If we leave C the way it was, going to the planning and zoning, and then coming back to, to the city council.
Are you talking about leaving the language that has a strike through through it?
Yeah, leaving it just like it was prior.
And deleting that bold language.
And deleting the bold.
Okay.
Just in staff's defense though, as you were on this board for a while, and Mr. Shirey and myself, and the council in the past has shown a lack of intestinal fortitude, I think that's putting it mildly, we caved every time. This would, this would all, we need to put, I do like that for part of this, and the four or five entities and people in question probably wouldn't come, and I'm with you, it's a two-edged sword, but it would take that away. I mean, because there have been some major abuses by people that knew they could just come here and-
And I agree, and occasionally, I think we have been in a lose-lose situation, but on other times, I think it's been very positive that they were able to come to us.
Well, Mr. Herron, is that a motion that you've made? Do we have a motion on the floor?
So I would make them-
If that's what your intent is-
That's my intent.
I don't think that needs to come back. I think you can do that tonight just by, and what that motion would be, would be to approve the ordinance and on page 3, 6C, that shows a strike through through it, to leave that language in and leave the subsection C that's shown in bold language.
I believe all that you're really doing is just leaving 155.04C as it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if the city attorney could maybe consider this, as a matter of compromise, I don't, this is no real indication as to where I'm going to vote because I think we need to vote for this, but you could put something in subparagraph C, following the application, approval and confirmation of compliance with all applicable ordinances and then approved by the planning and zoning. It just isn't reviewed. If we could put some teeth in there, that might meet everybody's needs.
So the planning and zoning would have to approve it all before it could come to us?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
The city would have to confirm that they've applied for and complied with all applicable ordinances and obtained approval from the planning and zoning commission. That way, I think it would put some teeth into the process to the extent that-
Let me, let me take a little bit of exception to that. If they complied with all the ordinances, the city planner can approve it anyway, but never come to the planning commission and city council.
But they could have an opportunity to present it to the planning and zoning if they did not approve it or if they did approve it, that would allow the city council-
That's what strike out C says.
And once again, we're lightening some things. I mean, I honestly don't anticipate anyone coming to the council in the next 12 to 24 months before this is rewritten, but if there is any unintended consequences. But if there is any unintended consequences, so we're not changing this two months from now.
Maybe, Mr. Palmer, if you're looking at that C with the strike through through it, in that second line where it says following review by the Planning Commission, you could change that to approval by the Planning Commission. And then that way it would mean if the Planning Commission didn't approve it, you couldn't.
That's correct. I think that's a compromise that might.
You see what, so it's saying, Councilmember?
Following, maybe change review to.
And then that second sentence, change the word review to approval.
Yep.
Would it still come to the council after that?
Yes.
Well, then it wouldn't be approved, it would be review.
It'd be, it'll then say must be approved by the City Council following approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what it would have to read.
So i- if they find it ridiculous and they both know on it, it dies there.
That's right.
I will amend my motion for the third time. Changing the review to approval by Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'd also like to thank the Planning and Zoning for spending their time on it. I know they had two different meetings. I watched them on YouTube the other night to get some more insight on this, and I know you guys had lengthy conversations also, and I thank you for that.
This is all proposed in the context that IBTS would come back and submit a new ordinance so that.
They're gone.
We won't have this problem ever again. Ever is kind of a definitive statement. I, I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm trying to be proactive.
One other suggested change to that C and in that first line where it says must be approved, I would suggest we change that to may. Change it to what? May, may what?
May.
It must be approved. Otherwise, it could be argued that that is a mandatory approval.
It would still kick up to the City Council.
So John, it's.
So I will amend it again.
So does it die?
To change must to may.
Does it die at the City Council, at the P and Z or does it continue up to the City Council?
It'll say, here's how, here's exactly how it'll read. It says site plans other than those approved by the city planner. And just for clarifications, those are the ones that everything's okay with. That other than those, they must be appro, or they may be approved by the City Council following approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's how it'll read.
May I offer a fourth amendment?
Please.
Instead of city planner, it should say director of community development.
That's right.
Well, we changed it everywhere else, so yes.
The reason it wasn't changed there was because we were taking that.
We're eliminating it. So I will amend that motion.
Let's get that person hired ASAP.
Change city planner to community development director.
There you go.
Do we need tally marks?
So we have, Item 6B, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Please cast your votes.
Susan, I'll revise that tomorrow and send you the revised one.
Item 7. Oh, I'm sorry, 6C, the dreaded emergency section. Do I have a motion?
Better not, we may need to amend it again.
With no motion, that dies. Item 7, approval of resolution number 1463, declaring property located at 3131 North MacArthur Boulevard as dilapidated structure. And I believe I have a staff report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite up Paul Justice. He is our code enforcement officer. After a while, I'll be giving you a report of the, the most recent numbers as far as code enforcement is concerned. Since I have been here, this represents a first dilapidated structure, and I'll let him share with you his observations regarding this particular location.
Good evening. 3131 MacArthur is a very large office complex building. I don't remember when it was actually built. I've been dealing with it since 2012. In 2013, we did a board and secure on it and high weeds and grass, things like that. They complied with everything and that hearing was canceled on the board and secure back in 2013. Every time we've had a problem there, that I've called them, they've immediately taken care of it. This was until May of this year, or April, excuse me, April this year, when we had the huge storm and the north, the west half of the north side of the building was blown off, the facade was, and they refused to take care of it. Since then, they have refused to board and secure, they refuse to do the high grass and weeds and things of that nature. I have not been able to get in contact with them. The owners live in California. They refuse to return phone calls on, now I can't even get to leave a message. They had emailed me, they have not returned any emails since then. The, I, in Title 99305, under dilapidated building B, subsection little B, a structure which is unfit for human occupancy due to the lack of necessary repairs and considered uninhabitable or is a, or is a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. This building does fit this description. There is no electricity, there is no water. The water has been shut off because the pipes have burst. There's, at this time, there is no way for anybody to be able to utilize this building without going through and completely redoing the entire inside, bringing in electricity. O G and E had removed the power supply pedestal that was outside of the building. They removed that, I believe, two or three years ago. So there's been just zero cooperation this year from the owners of this property.
Declaring this structure dilapidated does exactly what?
It allows the council to order it to be torn down.
And then the, that obviously is an expense the city carries, right?
The city could order it be torn down, order the owners to tear it down. If they do not, then we come back and the council would have to approve the funds to do it.
Actually, we're a little farther along than that. We've actually gone through the abatement process that state law gives us, which is somewhat of a self-help procedure. And that does authorize the city, after appropriate due process hearings, to order the, the abatement of the nuisance or removal of the building in this case. But, and that hearing was held, the city manager, after hearing the evidence, looking at the photographs and et cetera, determined that this building was a public nuisance and a hazard to the public. And because of the size of the building and the fact that it has an unknown value, it was my recommendation, rather than the city contracting someone like Midwest Wrecking to go down and shove it down at considerable cost, I can't give you an estimate, but I would estimate, you know, 50,000 or so to.
That'd be a lot higher than that. We're talking probably 250 to 500,000.
But at any rate, I didn't think the city had the money to justify paying whatever it would cost to tear that down. So the resolution before you deny it, if you approve it, is to direct the city attorney to file an action in District Court to ask the court to force the abatement of that nuisance and to assess the cost of it to the owners. This is the same process we, we filed down on Glade at 21st Street.
2204.
And successfully got that building removed several years ago. And with, the city did not have to pay the removal cost of that building, which I think was also substantial. I don't, I heard 100,000, I don't know whether that's right or not, but that's, that's what the resolution would do if you approved that.
So then upon this approval, then how, what's the timeframe, do you think, that this building is gone?
Well, it'll be filed in District Court. It'll just depend on what action they take. If they choose to resist this action, it could take months. If they don't do anything, it could happen pretty quickly. But if they don't do anything, let's say they don't show up at all, then you're still going to be faced with the same decision, and that is, where's the money going to come from to pay to shove it down, haul it off?
And once it's a vacant lot and the building is down, then what happens to this property?
Well, if we go through court, we'll ask that, that be imposed as a paramount lien on that property. And I will tell you, in reviewing the records, they owe, I believe it's $7,000 in back taxes on it right now that are unpaid. So they had boron taxes would be paid first, then I don't believe there's a first mortgage on the property. My research didn't indicate one. And, you know, you would have a second lien on the property.
It's a losing situation.
I question whether that lot would be worth enough to pay off the demolition cost. So I'd say let's face that when we come to it. This is step one, I would say. And something does need to be done, and if it looks like it's going to be a drawn-out affair, it may be that we'll come back to you and authorize you to authorize some expenditure of money to at least close it up so vagrants aren't living in it and so on. And that's, you know, that's a, I think that's currently happening from what I've got.
There, there is, up until May, they have been board and securing it. Since then, they have not. There is one window that is still open. The vagrants have ripped off the plywood and gotten in. Everything else is, well, the top, where the facade is, is, is open. On the south side, there's areas in between the floors that I have actually seen squirrels coming in and out of, but no people can get through that. The, the windows and doors on the first floor, there's only one at this particular time, that is unsecure.
But I'm sure all of you know, when the weather gets cold, those people you see sleeping on park benches start looking for a place to go. And when we finally got into this old nursing home down at 21st and Glade, it was obvious that families of people had been living in there. So, you know, that, if there's not anybody there right now, there, there will be.
Oh, there, I'm sure, especially wet weather, that people are in there. That doesn't surprise me a bit because it's very easy to get in at this point.
Did that answer?
As a secondary deal, just to let you know, I finally got my first complaint on that property about three weeks ago. And we had already started the process of abatement, going through it. Up until then, I had never received a complaint from a citizen on that property. So everything that we've done on this property to get them to comply has been due to me taking the initiative to try to keep it secure and cleaned up. Up until this year, I've been fortunate. They just refused to take.
I believe it has a for sale sign on it.
Yes.
Right now as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have the occasion to drive past that property multiple times a week. And this evening I drove past it and he is correct, on the backside, which would be the west side, it is open to where one could ingress and egress. And it is an extraordinary state of disrepair. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to declare that particular property a dilapidated structure as provided in, in Resolution 1463.
If you'll allow me to get back to the camera so I can swap back.
Thank you.
And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to abstain. This building was involved in some litigation that I was involved in, so I want council to know that in light of that, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Please cast your votes.
When that building was occupied, I had occasion to visit a tenant in that building, and he called that building the tomb. I'll not elaborate on why, but.
Item 8, it's proposed executive session for purposes of reviewing of performance of city manager J.D. Cox and discussion of terms of continued employment is authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes, Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act for purposes of discussing the employment hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual, salary, public officer, or employee. Do I have a motion to go on executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. And we shall return. Item 9. It's consideration approval of changes, if any, to employment agreement, terms of employment, city manager J.D. Cox. Because it is 10:20 and everybody's starting to fall asleep, we want to continue the evaluation until the next council meeting, but I wanted to say, we wanted to say publicly that we are, we are glad that you're here and glad of the job that you're doing and excited about the future of this city and the team that is, the team that is coming together and forming together. And we are confident that truly we will grab hold of the greatest days for Bethany that lie before us that I know you, you agree with. So, but we feel like due to time tonight because all the other public hearing items and everything else went considerably longer than we had anticipated. So we would like to continue this on until the next council meeting. Do I have to vote on that now?
No, you can just have it be placed on the next agenda.
Okay. So we would like that being placed on the next agenda. Item 10 is a call to the public. If there's anybody still here that would like to, you do, okay. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address and.
I did say, because I thought I came, this is my first time I've ever come to a council meeting, and I thought, I'm not going to leave, even though I know you were, had a longer meeting.
No, you waited this long, you just forgot to say something.
My name's Melanie Kane. I just basically wanted to hear any update on the traffic study. I reside on Central Avenue. And I also want to compliment, and I appreciate so much, Mr. Cox. He actually called me personally. I called in the middle, towards the end of the, or first part of August, end of July, because I was anticipating some of the issues that we would be having in our neighborhood with traffic and parking and parents and schoolchildren. And I wanted to address some of those issues early. So I had called his office and he spoke, called me back, probably talked to me for 30 minutes, let me vent, and I appreciated that so much. Also, Ms. Harris, I messaged her and she responded with some information that was very helpful. So I appreciate both of you for getting back with me. I'm normally a pretty mild-mannered person, but this is an issue that has really riled me up. And it has been a continuing problem for years with Central Road in the 43rd Street area. I realize, you know, hindsight's always 50/50, but so many of the issues we've had, we saw coming before, I think buildings were built before bonds were passed, because these were issues what we asked at the time. How is this going to be handled if these things occur? issues what we asked at the time, how is this going to be handled if these things occur? It's just been a continuing problem on our street. I know other streets have the same issues, but we have traffic. Our street's narrow anyway, so we have cars parked on both sides of the street, so there's very narrow space for cars to go down. We had people blocking our driveways, not partially, completely. I came home one day, cars on both sides of me, I'm inching down through the middle. Our other concern is safety issues. I'm not sure an emergency vehicle could get down our street during certain times of the day. There was a car parked completely in our driveway, or blocking our driveway. So I waited a moment, hoping the individual would see me. Of course, he's, you know, on his phone, doesn't see me. So finally, I tap my horn and he moves on. But it's not just our house, it's our neighbors. Thankfully, we're on the east side, so we don't have this issue, but neighbors across the street from us, people walk, not so much that they walk in their yards, our neighbors pretty understand that, but they push strollers. We have had cars turn around in our drive, leave ruts in our yard, more than once occasion, because many of the streets, houses on that street have single drives. So if anyone tries to turn around, they end up, you know, halfway in your yard. I had one lady actually park, not turn around, park behind our car in our driveway. And so I went out to her and I, you know, just said, is there something I can help you with? I'm trying, you know, we're going to be leaving in a few moments, and she was all flustered and, you know, due to the traffic herself. And I said, well, I understand that, but this is an issue for us in the neighborhood also. I had a parent tell me just about a week ago that if it wasn't for the out-of-district students, that Bethany schools would shut down. So just things like that, I guess I just have really issues with the parking. I do appreciate, we've had a motorcycle cop that has come by the last couple of days, and I think it has observed for himself some of our issues. He spent time, a neighbor across the street was mowing, and he took a break, and he probably spent thirty minutes with my neighbor across the street. We're all nice people, it's a wonderful neighborhood, good neighbors, we're mild-mannered people, we don't like to cause problems, but being a good neighbor works both ways. And we have just really, it has just been one of the most frustrating experiences, and I've lived in Bethany all my life, went to Bethany schools. So I, you know, so I, I understand that sense of community, but it's just, it's just making it a very unpleasant situation in our neighborhood. And I know the surrounding streets all have no parking signs, but for some reason, I guess it seems to be okay for Central not to have those. People walk down the street, you know, they're in the street, using it as a sidewalk, they're on the, in people's yards, and it just, I'm just concerned of, you know, someone's going to get hit, or someone's, you know, you know, going to need an emergency vehicle and won't be able to get there. So, anyway, you got to hear my, my venting tonight. It was important enough to me, like I said, I've never been to a council meeting, I don't think I've ever contacted a city councilman till I, till I made that attempt. So it's an issue that, to me, is important enough that, you know, I wanted to come tonight.
Well, thank you, and because you stuck it out, and I didn't even bother to turn on the timer, so.
That's okay. Well, I know, I know someone said, oh, we're going to cut four minutes.
But I will say that the traffic study that's coming, I specifically asked, as well as J.D., for it to address the parking issues and should there be no parking signs on these other streets, at least during school hours, and so.
And I do like the one, I don't have a problem, I know some people did with the one-way. I have, we don't have any issue with that, I think that helps them, but there's always going to be those parents, they don't want to wait in the line, so they're going to park and they're going to walk over to the school, because it's just around the corner. If they park in, you know, on our street, that's probably quicker for them to pick up their children that way, as opposed to, to using the new system. And so I don't know how you change people's, you know, adults' behavior at that point, just to have some common courtesy to, to the neighbors. And like I said, the yard stuff isn't so much for us, but I feel frustrated and sorry for my neighbors, because it frustrates them, you know.
Well, towing cars might be an option, maybe.
But anyway, but thank you for, thank you for letting me vent.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me vent.
Item eleven is a city attorney's report.
All items are listed on the agenda.
Item twelve, city manager's report.
I actually had a lengthy report, but I think I'm going to forego most of, most of that. But gee, I hate to, because we have so much stuff, so many things that are coming up, and I want to be sensitive to give you all heads up of things that are coming up, so you don't feel like you're blindsided. So if you'll bear with me for just a minute, let me give you a few heads up of things that are coming. Ambulance service, you might recall that we're go, we are out for bid for that now. We had the bid opening on August thirty-first, and there were four companies that submitted bids. The, our staff, together with War Acre staff, are working on those right now, and they're analyzing those bids, and they'll be coming back to us probably a little bit later in September. We're working on reviewing our fee structure that we currently have. I wanted to share with you one of our old problems. We had ONG, you might recall, accidentally buried a line on city property a while back. That has now been completely removed and cleaned up. SCU also had a kind of an accident with runoff into our Elden Lion Park off of their property. They were down there today cleaning that up and removing the sand and the runoff out of Elden Lion Park, so we appreciate them doing that. I'll update you on vision and goals next time around. I wanted to tell you automated trash, we, our staff, you know, we just hired the new deputy public works director with him on, on board. That's moving toward maybe its final phase of staff review. I anticipate that coming to you all in October for your consideration. Well, I will be presenting to the planning and zoning, oh, by the way, we now have planning and zoning packets from this point forward, will be on your iPads, and they may already be there now for this particular, this particular meeting coming up. But I will be making a presentation on a Let's Get Connected program that incorporates sidewalks, the building of sidewalks, making it easier for folks to construct sidewalks in our community. So that goes to planning and zoning Thursday, and will come to you all on the nineteenth of September. And then very quickly, code enforcement, we're now up to, Paul sitting back there, nine hundred and fifty-one notices of violation have been issued, and of those, eight hundred twenty-three have been closed and one twenty-eight remain open. So great job getting to this point. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, council members' announcements, comments, or proposal. Let's start down at Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything, I'm ready to go home.
Mr. Shire.
At this late hour, I'm ready to go home.
Mr. McCutcheon.
Well, as we've been, you know, in the fishbowl, so to speak, talking about, you know, our city manager, I just want you to know how awesome it's been working in and around you and look forward to it for several years. I had a conversation with, I hope I'm not taking up too much time, had a conversation with David Buchanan and with Chief Phil Cole over the last few months, as I've been getting to know them. I know, I know Chief Cole, but don't know David that well. And it wasn't at the same time, separate months, actually. And they both expressed to me how you have brought this city together where their entities, where they direct, feel a sense of pride in the city that they haven't felt in years. So that's a lot of credit to you, Mr. City Manager, just wanted you to know that, I appreciate that.
Mr. Herron.
Thank you, I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Todd.
Good night.
Dr. Harris.
Library is almost closed.
Your Honor, Palmer.
Just a couple of issues, I think I got a lot of questions answered in the process of this meeting, and I appreciate that, Mr. Manager, and I think you're doing a great job. I would like some follow-up on the timeline related to the cleanup of the inlets and the trenching in Ward Two. I think that that's something that I don't know about, I need to get some more information. I understand the traffic study is going to take place in September twenty seventeen, so I think that's a good answer to some questions that we have. And I would like to have an opportunity to have some input into the proposed sidewalk plan that was presented to the P and Z. I think I have some ideas on Ward Two, specifically bike paths to stench comb and things like that. I was kind of surprised to see that, in that no one really asked me, so I would like to have an opportunity to have some input to get to that point. And with that, I'd like to bid everybody a good night.
My final comments, you answered one. I was going to ask about the automated trash and where we were with that, and wanted an update, so that was awesome that you beat me to that. The other thing is, in regards to Mr. Palmer's traffic study around the one-ways in the Bethany Public Schools, we know that it is very dangerous for parents picking up their kids at, is it like, like Overholser, is that elementary thirty-sixth and Council? And just wonder about the possibility of, one day soon, looking at a traffic study there just to see if there, is there anything that can be done there? Is that as dangerous as people say, for people picking up? And what can we do to, to make that a safer place? Item fourteen, is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is a consent docket, A and B, do I have a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second? Please cast your votes. Item two, is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one, consent docket A and B, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Please cast your votes. Any new business? No new business, I consider it adjourned, declare it adjourned until September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one, consent docket A and B, do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Or discussion.
I'm sorry, but, excuse me. And I would second that.
Please cast your votes.
I have no idea.
Item two, approval of resolution number fourteen sixty-one to employ, how do you pronounce that?
Joanning.
Joanning and Byram, P.C., attorneys of law, as financial legal counsel of Bethany Development Authority. Do I have a motion or discussion?
Real quick question, why are we employing this firm and what are they going to do? I have no idea.
This firm has served as bond counsel to the city for longer than I've been here. The waterside development that's coming up, the Bethany Development Authority, is the entity that's currently in charge of that project, and at some point, there will be tax-exempt bonds issued to repay the developer for the infrastructure costs, and that's what his job will be.
I've got a question also on that, sorry, guys, but, you know, the only reason I can tell we're using Joanning again is because it's the way we've always done business for fifty years. I understand that. But these guys also, in full disclosure, they've worked on more than one TIF district in Bethany before, and they were not paid for it, is my understanding, before my time. And so they've already done the work on some of them, in foreign properties, they've already done it, they just changed some of the dates and some of the numbers, and they've already gotten the work done. That's why I didn't know if we should probably, I'm just saying, if you do the same old thing, you get the same old thing. I don't know if we should look for some new blood.
Well, you know, the same old thing would be they didn't get paid, I don't think they're willing to do that again.
But they also didn't get the job done. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
That wasn't their fault.
I know, but I mean.
And I think they're going to have to do more than change states, because that was a different type of TIF.
Yeah, it's. Different type of TIF?
Yes. Was it not?
It, it was different, but it never got to the point this one has. It, it died pretty early on the buy. Because the developer was, was not the real thing, I would say.
I was just, I was just curious, the only reason, I mean, other than they're the same old way of doing stuff.
The, the bonds that will be issued, that's, that's probably two years down the road or three, but, you know, this just shows them that they're going to get paid when they have done the work already.
I understand.
There's two years of work ahead before that's ever done.
I know, I just wondered about the selection is all, like Steve was wondering if it was just, maybe take a reason.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
And one point I might make, if, if there are no bonds issued, there's no fee.
Is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.